WDEV News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fintress County Commission. The Fintress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month and you can see it live on Channel 12 cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904. For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fintress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equal Housing Leader Member FDIC.
We'll now call this meeting of the Fintress County Commission to order. May we please rise for the presentation colors by the Clark Range JROTC. Remain standing for the pledge of the flag by Mr. Justin Miller and opening prayer by Sean Hines Pastor of the Clark Range Methodist Church.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order arms. Colors reverse, march. Forward, march. Color guard, hold. Order, colors. Order, march.
Let's bow our heads and pray. Almighty God, Heavenly Father, thank you for all those here tonight. Every seat filled by those making decisions that affect this great community, those living in it, young and old. Father, we ask that all the considerations made this evening be done with full understanding that we are doing your will. That we help one another. That we use the goods and resources that you have given over to us on loan to better help one another in this community. That we reach out, help each other, make decisions not that gain, not for us to gain, but for everybody to gain. That we look upon our brother or sister in this community and further out in the same kind of love and dedication we hold to ourselves and our families. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to do this. All this we pray in the name of your son, our Lord, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
West Marilyn, she'll call the roll, please.
Nikki McDonald.
Here.
Justin Miller.
Here.
Rod Williams.
Here.
Kim Davison.
Here.
Bette Hughes.
Here.
Robert Cooper.
Here.
Lester Gooding.
Here.
Leon Stoudt.
Here.
Larry Cooper.
Here.
Wayne Matthews.
Here.
Has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes from last month's meeting? If so, need a motion, please.
So move.
Commissioner Gooding, second, please.
Second.
Commissioner McDonald. Roll call vote, please.
Nikki, four. Justin.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wayne.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Ten-four, none against, motion passes. We have, I believe, four notaries to approve this month, the first one being John W. Galloway Jr., Pamela A. Kissel, Mariah Looper, and Judith R. South.
Make motion to approve.
Commissioner Miller made the motion, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kim Davison. All four, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. At this time, we have something a little special tonight. We have a proclamation to give to the Clark Range JROTC Raider team for winning the All Service Raider National Championship. It's pretty big to win a district, or a region, or a state, but when you go and you beat all the service people, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine, I believe is what it was, and you win the national championship, that's a pretty big dog right there to do something like that. We're very proud of them, and at this time, we'd like to present them with a plaque. And Commissioner Gooden will go to the microphone and read it, and we'll present them with a plaque, have them all come up. When we get this read, and we will present you all with the plaque. Proclamation in the Board of Fintress County Commission in honor of the accomplishments of the 2018 Clark Range JROTC Raider team. Whereas, Friday, November the 2nd, the Clark Range JROTC Raiders competed and won the 2018 All Service Raider National Championship Co-Ed Division at the Lawhorn Scout Reservation in Molina, Georgia. Whereas, Clark Range competed in four physical events against the best teams in the nation from the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and military captains. Whereas, the first event of the day was the conquest. At the command go, the ten cadets, always in boots and uniform, six males and four females sprinted down a hill with two 35-pound packs and a 40-pound ammo crate. They jumped through a 22-inch tar, suspended five feet high with equipment. Then continued down the trail to an eight-foot-high wall. They went over it with equipment and continued down the trail. Went through a 20-foot-long, 30-inch wide cover with equipment. Continued running, went through another cover with equipment, and then sprinted 500 yards through the mud to finish to the finish line. Clark Range won first place in this event with a time of 6 minutes and 31 seconds. Whereas, the next event was the physical team test. At the command go, the ten cadets sprinted 40 yards and each picked up 50-pound can and carried them 20 yards. They sprinted 100 yards to a herder, sprinted 100 yards and went through two covers, sprinted 20 yards to a 20-yard ten-lane base. Went over eight tars, sprinted 40 yards to a canoe with 250 pounds of weight in it. Picked it up and carried it 20 yards, sprinted 40 yards to a turnaround point and repeated the whole process, returning everything back to where it was. Clark Range won second place in this event with a time of 4 minutes and 25 seconds. Whereas, the next event was the 5K run. Due to extreme weather conditions and hazards on the course, it was shortened to 2.4 miles, 1.2 miles from the river to the top of the mountain and return. And the cadets were required to run in boots. Clark Range won third place in this event with a time of 14 minutes and 40 seconds. Whereas, the last event of the day was a one-rope bridge connect construction. On the command go, the team sprinted 20 yards to a 170-foot rope coiled on the ground behind a tree. Cadet Hancock grabbed the end of the rope, tied an end of line, bowline, and connected it to his Australian seat. He then crossed a 90-foot river and tied the rope to a tree. The other cadets finished securing the rope on the tree on their side. And eight of the cadets then, no more than three at a time, hooked into the rope and crossed upside down across the river. Cadet Mize untied the rope from the tree and crossed the river. The cadets took all the knots out of the rope and pulled it from the water. And Cadet Hancock called time. The cadets won first place in this event with a time of 2 minutes and 16 seconds. Whereas, Clark Range JROTC has competed at the All Service Raider National Championship in 2016 and 2017, placing second, and in 2018, winning the All Service National Championship. Whereas, Clark Range JROTC has also won the Raider State Championship four years in a row. Whereas, the Fintress County Executive Office and Board of Commissioners formally express their appreciation to them in this proclamation and plaque to commemorate their dedication and excellence and to their positive impact on our county and country. Presented by the Fintress County Executive, the Executive and Board of Commissioners, Jimmy Johnson, Fintress County Executive. Congratulations. Okay, our next item is the consideration of the lease term adjustments request from the Department of Finance and Administration for the Human Services Building. And this here is just to get us on track. Starting in March of 2019, we'll take a lease then, a new lease from then on.
This is just a correction in the old lease, and then our new lease will begin March of 2019. We will be presenting yet closer to that.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So move.
Commissioner Hughes made the motion.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Cooper made the second. Roll call vote, please.
Larry.
Four.
Wayne.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Nikki.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Next item, number 10, consideration of approval of the drug screen contract between Fintress County Government and Jamestown Regional Medical Center. Ms. Leslie, would you like to speak to that real quick?
It's my understanding that there's a new state statute that went into effect that says we are now required, in a workers' compensation situation, to screen for some additional drugs that we're not screened for previously, that we're refusing to do so, we're required to do so. So we have asked the hospital to amend our agreement where they provided our drug screen services by contract to include those new services, and there's a little bit of tweaking the statute as to how those are done, if you're a simple positive or not. So they've given us a new price on that, which is not a tremendous increase when you look at the work, rather than additional drugs that'll be screened for. I think these are new hires and workers' comp as well.
Do I hear a motion on the contract, please?
Make a motion to accept.
Commissioner Gooden made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Miller. Roll call vote, please.
Nikki.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wayne. Four.
Ten-four, none against.
Motion passes. Item number 11 is the consideration of approval of the inmate agreement for hospital services between Fintress County Government and Jamestown Regional Medical Center. Contract term to begin 1 of 2019 and then end of 12, 2019. And this is for the same reduction that they have given us in the past, just need a motion to have a new contract with them.
So move.
Motion made by Wade Matthews and seconded by Kim Davison.
I want to jump in there and say that we don't have the actual contract in hand. Something that came down only on last Friday. We got the confirmation back, and the hospital is working, their attorneys are working on that. I talked to the assistant today. She will actually have us a draft document in hand hopefully by the end of this week. But what we want you all to be aware is that we're not altering that anyway except the tenover as we were previously, being successor, turnover, and of course, the dates. We went from, I think, April of this year till the end of December. We're just trying to get this in place prior to the end of the year when our other one does expire. So if there are anything that's any different, we'll hold up on it and go again in January. But I believe that, to our understanding, it's going to be the same essential document. Would like to say a huge thank you. You know, we have a little hospital. It's been incredibly helpful to work with the Sheriff's Department of Fintress County. And Lynette over there has been wonderful to just addressing anything that we've needed pre-proximal, and she's still on our plate, so we cannot thank them enough. I think to date, we looked at some numbers today, from April of 18 until the end of November, a little over $25,000 in cost savings that this has generated for the county, so that's a huge benefit for us.
Motion's been made and seconded. Need a roll call vote, please.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wayne.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Nikki.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Kim, four.
Motion passes, ten-four, none against. Item number 12 is the discussion of the approval letter from the Tennessee Comptrollers to issue a three-year capital outlay note not to exceed $230,000, to be known as the Highway Department Capital Outlay Note Series 2018. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Commissioner Lester Gooden made the motion, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mickey McDonald.
Could you explain?
Sure will. This here is to improve the fuel system that they have at the county highway department. It's been there for several years, and it is actually, my understanding, they can't just take it down to 1,000 gallons of fuel, and then they have to get another load because there's so much trash and debris in the bottom of it that it stirs it up. Then, of course, then when they fill up a vehicle, it comes out into the vehicle that they put it in. And the second item is for a new tractor with a 22, I believe it was a 22-foot boom arm on it for cutting rideaways and doing other types of works also with it. So that will be a roll call vote.
Nikki.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wayne.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
Ten-four, none against. Motion passes. Item number 13, consideration of appointment of Mayor Lyndon Baines to fill the remaining term of Mayor Darlene Davis to the Fintress County Planning Commission for the first district. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Robert Cooper makes the motion, second.
Second.
Mr. Justin Miller made second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no. Consideration of appointment of Joey Vaughn to the Fintress County Senior Citizen Advisory Board with a term to expire in June 21. Alice, would you like to address that just a small amount?
I'm sorry. Joey Vaughn and Ms. Ray Ella of Metta Thrift Pharmacy have been longtime sponsors and supporters of the center. A vacancy occurred on our advisory board due to the appointment of Mr. Johnson as being county executive, so we, the advisory board needed to appoint one more member, and Mr. Joey graciously accepted upon your approval. And they have had unwavering support in all areas, and we appreciate everything they've done and know he will be asset to the advisory board.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to make that motion to appoint Joey Vaughn to the advisory board, Sigerson.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Miller.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rod Williams. Roll call vote, please.
Nikki.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wayne.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
Ten-four, none against. Motion passes. Item number 15 is consideration of the acceptance of the Fintress County Audit Committee Annual Report to the Commission fiscal year ending June 30, 2017. Mr. Phillip, would you care to address that?
We've got a lot of success on it. We've had a lot of less notifications on the issues. It's been good. So if you have any questions or anything I could add on that?
I think we had this down to about five findings there for the whole year, for the whole county system, so that's pretty good.
Ms. Chairman, I move we accept the audit report.
Commissioner Larry Cooper made a motion to accept it, second.
Second.
Mr. Rod Williams, second. All in favor, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likewise. Thank you, Phillip, and the whole Audit Committee, we appreciate it, really do.
You're welcome.
Consideration number 16 of the following department amendments to be added to the Fintress County Policy and Procedure Handbook. Definition of holiday pay for solid waste scheduled employees. That's on page 51, which at there, in the handbook, it says you be paid for your holiday pays for eight hours, but the schedule of the solid waste, a lot of them are 12 hours, so the amendment will be to, and that account for folks, people working for the 12-hour shifts, would get the holiday pay for 12 hours instead of just eight, because they're scheduled to work 12 hours that they would miss. And the second one is the definition of ambulance service PRN as needed. Micah, would you like to address that, please?
I think in the handbook it states that the employees in the county are full-time and part-time. We just want to clarify that we have PRN employees, we don't have part-time, the ambulance service as far as the EMTs and paramedics, so they're not eligible for the part-time benefits, that's within that handbook, so we just wanted to make clarification on that.
I should thank you. Do I hear a motion for these two amendments to the handbook?
I'll so move.
Mr. Leon made the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Robert Cooper seconds it. Roll call vote, please.
Nikki.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Four.
Yeah, Rod, four, yeah.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Against.
Wayne.
Four.
Jimmy, I see. Just in, okay, the handbook, this is something we've transitioned into, and I see over time we found some things that need to be corrected or added to, whatever. I feel like if we could, it would be better to try to focus on that one certain time of year, maybe at budget time, along with the Budget Committee, assign them the task of being the handbook review. So at that point in time, any revisions that need to be made, I think it would be better if we hold off to then and maybe make those at one time, that way we can fit everything. I mean, I think the PRN thing was needed to do now because that affected a lot of things. You know, we had to classify those as PRN, but I think it might be a good idea in the future if we looked at maybe having a handbook committee in conjunction with the Budget Committee. Just a thought.
Item number 17, consideration of the following budget amendments. County buildings, move $20,000 for ADA building compliance. Larry, would you like to say something about that?
Yeah, we had a meeting with Allen Hill. I don't know how long I'm going to be, a week or two or something like that. There's a lot of things on that ADA compliant that we can do in-house. We just don't have money set up in that particular line item to do the ADA compliant. So what we're asking the Commission to do is move $20,000, which is in the county buildings budget, from the utilities line item up to the 335 line item, which it says it's got a line in there for ADA. And Robert can speak to what we're going to try to do in-house with this amount of money before we have to do the big project.
We've got some lavatories to change, we've got some wheelchair ramps. Some of that stuff we can do in-house. Of course, next summer, a lot of the stuff outside we'll be looking at, but as of right now, we've got to have some money in there to get started on these ramps and stuff that we can use inmates and so forth to do.
help or whatever, it will, uh, decrease the, the final payment of the ADA compliance when we get finished with it. Our next one is county buildings, three thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars for insurance claim received for South Fentress Park.
Miss, I make a motion that we approve the twenty thousand dollar transfer.
Okay.
I'll second.
Larry Cooper made the motion, and Benny Hughes seconded the motion. Roll call vote.
Sorry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Mickey.
Four.
Tim.
Four.
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 Leon.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Mickey.
Four.
Tim.
Four.
Four.
None, none against.
Ten, four, none against. The second one now, there was some vandalism at the, uh, South Fentress Park, quite a bit of vandalism, uh, and hopefully in the next, uh, the next years, or next month, or next meeting, we can maybe find, where we may be able to find some cameras and such to help deter some of this, but anyway, we received a check for three thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars insurance claim received from the South Fentress Park. And that there's, what that there money there is about.
I move we accept.
Motion by Larry Cooper to accept.
I'll second it.
Robert Cooper made the second, roll call vote.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Kim, four, none against.
Motion passes, ten, four, none against. Ms. Alice, would you like to, uh, address the seven hundred twenty-six dollars for the recreation fees for the senior center?
This is our normal, uh, fundraising, uh, and such. There is two hundred and fifty dollars that you will save that comes with, uh, when, it comes up every month. Two hundred and fifty dollars of this money is from a contract that we have with Trudy Hale, and that contract basically is that we provide a space for senior adults to exercise. And you have to have some type of space in that senior center for them to have exercise programs, either a daily or, which we do. Uh, so that's something to keep in mind as our center grows in capacity. If we want to keep proceeding with each month, uh, we've got to be able to provide that space. But the rest of it is just basically Christmas ornaments and such as that.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Miller made the motion, second by?
Second.
Commissioner McDonald made the second, roll call vote, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Ben.
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 Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Kim, four, none against.
Eight, four, two against. Eight, four, two against, motion passes. Do we have anything else?
Mr. Chairman, uh, in the work session, uh, I know that we had some discussion with the, uh, with John Gunner from the UT office, um, and I know that we're not wanting to commit anything from the county yet, but I think that this commission needs to, and I'll make this in a form of a motion, that we authorize you to write a letter of support for this program to get this started a little bit quicker. And I, I make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Larry made a motion to send the letter of our support in that effect to Mr. John Garrett for the livestock pavilion.
I think it's, like, that, yeah, Fentress County Agriculture Pavilion grant proposal, that, I, that may be who you need to address it to or something, but I, I think we need to go on record just stating that we wanted to, you know, to get it started as quickly as possible.
Second was made by Commissioner Williams. Roll call vote, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Four.
Tim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Kim, four, none against.
Motion passes, ten, four, none against, or anything else?
Yes, Mr. Johnson, I have a, um, request to give a legal status update, which would be just to the commission and to you as the party representative, uh, in some of these cases. So that would be done, um, in a closed litigation session, very brief, five, ten minutes maximum. There won't be any discussions, this is, uh, the proper protocol for presenting this information, so please don't be, uh, think that's anything unusual. We've had a couple of these and had some information come to light very recently, I want to share with everyone. And like I said, there won't be any discussion or any vote taken during this, if there was a need for that, we can back out, but this is something that we can get presented to you all pretty quickly.
Do we have a motion for a ten-minute recess?
So moved.
Motion made for a ten-minute recess, but Mr. Commissioner Hughes seconded by Commissioner Cooper, will step out for about ten minutes, and we'll be back. We'll call the meeting back to order, is there any further business at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Based on our, uh, local government pool attorney, Tom LaCuires, uh, he has, uh, his recommendation regarding mediation on Jane Doe slash Rains litigation, I'll make the motion that we accept our attorney's recommendation and give him such authority to proceed with the mediation on January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Larry Cooper, second. Second motion by Commissioner Rod Williams. Should be a roll call vote, any further discussion? Call the roll, please, Mr. Brown.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.